All set, we're broadcasting.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 17th Town Council Meeting to order. We'll begin the meeting with a roll call as all votes throughout the night will be a roll call. We do have some attendees in already and I'm sure more will be adding. We do have a couple of public hearings tonight. If you wish to speak during the public hearing, I will call on you. You raise your hand. I see we have a phone and caller. If you are on the phone, there is a feature to raise your hand if you're not sure how to use it or you want to, we can unmute you. Text Sue Semino. Her phone number is 339-987-2726, 2726. Again, 339-987-2726 if you are calling and you want to speak during the public hearings. When I call on any of you. With that, Clark Semino, roll call vote please to open our meeting.
Council Erica, here. Council Connors, here. Council Flaherty, here. Council Hume, here. Council Mackin, here. Council O'Brien, present. Council Ringus, here. Council Ryan, here. Council Sasha, here. All present.
Thank you, Clark Semino. And with us tonight, we have the wonderful Anne Tolan, who I don't, everybody must know Anne Tolan. But anything good that happens in town, you can pretty much guarantee it that Anne is involved, always behind the scenes. She doesn't like the attention, but it's amazing what Anne and all of her volunteers do, especially at this time of year during the holidays. And I wanted, I asked Anne to come in and talk to us, which she usually does every year. But now especially with COVID and Thanksgiving and holiday seizing approach us. And just for you to talk to us of what your needs are. I know there's always a great, great deal of need every year. If you can just speak specifically, or in addition to what you always do and talk to us about what you do in the Marge Crispin and in all your volunteerism. And what you are seeing with the community and how we can help. So with that, Anne, I will turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me tonight and on behalf of Pat Conrad, on behalf of my Board of Directors, we want to thank you for always supporting us. And I can't believe another year's gone by, but here we are again. And we had a very busy, what I thought was a very busy year last year. We had an enormous amount of participants and food go out all year. I will forward some of the statistics that I usually give out at this meeting. I will give some of these stats to Sue and she can forward them to you. But as of last year, we gave out, we received through USDA and through the Greater Boston Food Bank and some of the participants in the Food Bank, we received over 104,000 pounds of food last year. We distributed 16,000 bags of groceries. And we do keep these stats in order to qualify each year for the donations and the assistance we get through Greater Boston Food Bank. So these stats are kept very, very closely. And we, it's amazing when you see them at the end of the year, what kind of a year we had. With that said, this year, with the virus, with the coronavirus, it's been just an amazing year to think how many people need our assistance this year. We are, we've doubled the recipients easily over the year. We've instituted a delivery service for those people that really should be, you know, the elderly and the disabled who had to stay in this year. And so we do a delivery service. We have sidewalk service three days a week. And as I say, we're booming. But now we're coming into the holiday season and we're trying to come up with a way to serve everybody and also keep everybody safe. So as of next Monday, we are going to do our Thanksgiving distribution. We're going to do it outside. We're going to do it over at 74 Prawn Street and it's going to be a drive-through. We are going to have the truck, first truck is a refrigerator truck. And that will have all the turkeys in it. Though, and it'll be a drive-through, as I say. So the first stop will be for the families to receive their turkey. The next vehicle, which is being provided by BEMA, will be the produce. And then we will have all the, the non-perishable items will be in one of the highway trucks in one of our vehicles. So we're hoping to keep everybody safe, make sure everybody is taken care of in, in a safe and responsible way. We are over, right now we're over about 140 families. But we've had a number come in today and we have a lot of inquiries for tomorrow. So as last year for Thanksgiving.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Is that 140 just for Thanksgiving?
Just for Thanksgiving. But last year, our number was 172 families. So, and we usually get the bulk of our requests like that last week. So we're probably going to hit the same amount that we did last year. The numbers go up a little bit more at Christmas time because we also do the gifts for children. We, in addition to all the food items. So Monday, November 23rd is distribution for Thanksgiving. And then distribution for Christmas is going to be done over a three-day period because we want to limit the amount of people coming each day. So it'll be December 14th, 15th, and 16th. That will be a Monday, Tuesday, and a Wednesday. We are trying to lean more heavily on gift cards this year because we can't have the town toy drive, for one thing. And into, into actually try to make everything as safe as possible. That we're going to do a lot of gift cards. And we're going to do it a week earlier than we usually do to give parents and guardians a little bit of time to utilize the cards. There will still be choice of ham or turkey with all the fixings for dinner for Christmas also. So that'll be the 14th, 15th, and 16th, and it will again be over on Prawn Street.
And Anne, if people want to donate, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
That's okay. If you, for donations, we are taking the donations over at 46 Lincoln Street. There also is receptacles inside the town hall for Christmas donations. And we did start our annual pajama drive. I hope everybody can see it. There are signs going up all. You have one. Great. The signs going up all over town because we do our annual pajama drive. This is our fifth year. I think I'm up to about 82 pairs since last Friday. They're rolling in. People seem to enjoy to be able to contribute to that. Last year, I think we ended up with 402 pairs of pajamas. So, and those go from birth up to age 15. And they've been quite a big hit. We do have a lot of winter jackets that have been donated, brand new. And we're, we're doing some of the toys. But as I say, in order to keep everything as safe as possible, we're trying to lean a little bit towards the gift cards. A lot of toys are coming in though. Games and puzzles and things like that. So, but I will tell you, it's, it's some, it's a blessing to watch how this community comes together year after year to support each other. It starts with the town hall, every town department. Every, every, every department helps us out. The police, the fire, the schools. Board of Health has been tremendous to us, supporting us, especially this year with the virus. BEMA has, has, has jumped in and all the businesses that have, that step up during, during, especially during this time of year. But we have businesses that consistently help us all year long. Target in the community, they did over 20, 25,000 pound donations last year because we have to weigh them in for Greater Boston Food Bank. Shaw's, Stop &amp; Shop, Kentucky Fried Chicken, Panera. So many of the businesses in town are always there to help us. And they come back year after year and we're very grateful for it. And by no means least, it's the residents. They, they call constantly trying to donate to us, find out what we need. And they step up every, every time. And it's, it's a, it's a privilege to watch it all happen. And to be able to carry on the legacy for Marge Crispin and her family. I remember working with her back in the late 70s. Of course, it wasn't the, the volume we have now. But Marge felt very strongly about supporting people and people in the community. And it is, it's nice to see her, her legacy carried on at this point. Important to me.
Thank you, Anne. And it's, like I said earlier, you've done so much for the community year after year. And I'm so happy to hear all the changes you've made this year with COVID and keeping you and your volunteers and all the families safe as well. If somebody wants to donate something, whether it be a gift card or money, do, where do they bring it to?
We, we will take anything, we're, we're open between 8:00 and 3:30. Definitely Monday through Thursday over at 46 Lincoln Street. We also have receptacles inside the town hall. And those can be donated anytime that the town hall is open. There's a receptacle now for the pajamas and there's a food recept, there's a receptacles over there for the food, for the holiday program. And any, any type of gifts and things can be given either way, either way.
So are you still accepting toys? Because I know the toy drive.
We are. And there will be, you know, the, we will still have toys, but not to the volume. We won't be able to do it to the volume we usually have. And you know what we usually have is huge.
Incredible, incredible. Okay. Now how about for families in need? Because there could be some families, you know, who, same families each year. And I'm sure there's a lot of new, you know, families individually this year. What do they do to reach out? How do they ask for help? Who do they call? Where do they go?
They, they can, they can apply directly to the center. We just need a proof of residency. We will verify through the school. Some, a lot of it comes through the school department, our referrals. And this year is a little bit difficult with the kids not in school all the time. So any of the referrals that came through the schools, we knew automatically were like Braintree residents. But we, we will, we will ask some limited amount of financial information. But people can come, they can call us. We were sending out the applications earlier so that they could do them and send them back in. Right now, we would suggest they either call and if they are able to come in and fill out their application. The one application is for both Thanksgiving and for Christmas. And then we get the children's sizes. We're trying to do a little bit of a questionnaire of what they're looking for for their children. If there's any special needs, we try to take care of that.
Okay, great. I think that, Anne, we all have, we being the counselors, emails, friends we can text, social media. So we will all do our part to get the word out to support.
Always do.
Families. Yeah, it won't be the same without the toy drive, but I know Braintree always steps up for, for the community and for our families and neighbors and friends in need. And I know we'll do anything we can to support you, Anne. So having you here tonight, we can do in the future, reach out. So it's the Marge Crispin Center, 46 Lincoln Street, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 3:30 for donations, drop off money, gift cards, food, you name it.
Absolutely. And, and again, again, the, the town, the council over the years. And I say, as I say, the whole town is so supportive. And an organization like ours is only as good as our volunteers and our supporters. So that speaks volumes for the town.
Right, absolutely.
Couldn't do it without everybody.
You're very modest, Anne.
No, 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 no. It doesn't, no one person could possibly do anything like this. It has to be, it has to, it takes a village.
It does. You're a great leader then. How's that? Council Connors, go ahead.
Thank you again. But thank you again.
Stay with us, stay with us, Simone.
Only. Okay.
Anne, I just, first of all, thank you for all you do for Braintree. You are definitely
My pleasure.
a, a longtime giver in this town. I had one question on the gift cards. Is there a desired denomination that would make it easier for the center to distribute? Is there, you know?
Good point, good point. We are asking for small denomination cards because we like to bundle the cards for families. Like we might want to give them like a couple of Target cards or Walmart or different food concession places. And it works, it works well with small, smaller denominations. And what we do is we bundle them and we are able to give out a group of cards to a family, depending on the size of the family. But what we look for mostly is a smaller denomination card.
Thank you. That makes it easier.
Yes.
So Anne, do you say smaller? Are you talking like $5, $10?
10, yeah. 10 is, is great because, you know, to be able to put, when we find out how much, how much we actually have in gift cards, we're able to determine how much we can give to a family and we gear it to the number of children. So that they are able to, and this, this year is a little different because we're really leaning towards the cards. Whereas we did like a combination of cards and, and gifts. Gift cards were mainly for the older kids before this, but we're just going to gear it to the families this year.
Great. All right. Thank you so much for being with us again tonight, Anne, and we will do whatever we can.
Thank you for your support.
Spread the word, help. If you have some more information you want to share at our future meetings, we most certainly will do so. But thank you too, again to you and all your supporters and volunteers. And you are absolutely right, it does take a village. But there's so many, so many more people who benefit from all the good work that you have been in charge of. So, great job.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Amine. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Bye-bye. We are still under announcements. I just want to acknowledge, last week was Veterans Day. Due to the governor's restrictions for the prior, the new restrictions rather, there was only virtual events held. So I want to thank Mecca Chorus and our new veterans agent, Vincent Fontaine, who led the event outside a town hall with some veterans. I did have the opportunity to be there and represent the council. So I thank you to all of our veterans who are currently serving and who have served. We appreciate all you do. We acknowledge you on Veterans Day, but on every single day of the year. And appreciate your service to the United States of America and to the town of Braintree. So thank you to all who were involved. It was a terrific event. And BKM, who is with us here tonight, also televised it. So that should be playing out on BKM. One other announcement, the 21st Annual Braintree High School Athletic Association Turkey Trot. I think many of us here tonight have actually partaken in this turkey trot, which is held on Thanksgiving morning at Braintree High School. Due to COVID, as many other events, this will now be a virtual event. You can sign up online. All the money raised through the Athletic Association funds all the athletic programs at Braintree High School as well as South Middle School and East Middle School. It funds items that are not covered in the budget, such as uniforms. In the past, they've purchased equipment and things like that. But it's on Run Sign Up. If you Google Run Sign Up and put in BHSAA, that stands for Braintree High School Athletic Association Turkey Trot, the link will come up. And that is a virtual run anytime between Thursday, November 19th and November 29th. They are also giving away t-shirts through this virtual run. Is there any other announcements from any other counselors? Seeing none. Okay, they're moving on to approval of minutes. We have none. And now communications and reports from the mayor and town boards. 01220, council president COVID-19 update with us tonight. We have Mary Beth McGrath, the Director of Municipal Licenses and Inspections, who was always here with us. And it's her Super Bowl, I think, that keeps on going, is never-ending, Mary Beth. Because we are still in the midst of COVID and recently seeing some spikes. So thank you again for being with us here tonight. So with that, Director McGrath.
You're very welcome, Council President Hume. And I thank you for inviting me as well as the council members. Before I get started, I would be remiss in not mentioning, and also feel it's important that I meant, I do mention this to you, is that Anne Tolan, as tireless as she is in her work, which I can't keep up with her, and I'm sure many of us can't. It's important to note, not only does she provide a daily service to the community in a, in a normal period, but more importantly, during the COVID event and the pandemic, Anne has, has been so supportive to the departments. And it's important that you know that there are residents in our community, and one of the services that we provide, if there are residents that are either in an isolation or quarantine period, that they often obviously cannot get out to get food products and necessities that they may need for them and their family. Anne and her team have been incredibly supportive in assisting not only the mayor's office, but my department in doing this. And so they package up a wonderful package and it's delivered to the resident. And I will tell you, the comments that we are getting back from the residents that are recipients of those wonderful care packages are, I mean, besides breaking into tears of gratefulness, they are so incredibly proud to be members of the community that support them in the way that they do. So again, I cannot thank Anne enough and her team for all of their work to assist us. And I know Rob and his team with BEMA and Kate with the mayor's office have been wonderful in coordinating all that. So it's important that you do know that. So as far as the COVID report, you may recall, I visited with you last on November 4th. And our numbers on November 4th for that particular day were 1,188 cases. So some 13 days later, we are at 1,314 cases. So we're up by 126 cases in 13 days. On November 4th, the percentage in the community was 97% with being 3% in long-term care and assisted living facilities. As of today's date, we are 100% in the community as far as our COVID cases. So we clearly are involved in a spike now, which I know that throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the nation that is occurring. It's, it's an alarming number that we're seeing, 126 cases in 13 days. I cannot stress enough the importance of following all of the governor's orders that have recently been in place and those that have been in place since the first start of this COVID event. We have a very special event for each household and the community and the nation next week, that being Thanksgiving, which is a wonderful time normally for families to come together. But I do have to ask that the governor's order be followed in that there is a requirement that the number of persons inside a residence cannot exceed 10 people that are not related to that household. And it's really important that that be followed because the spikes that we are seeing, they're absolutely in the community. And we have households that have multiple family members. So there is spread in a household. I know I speak about this with you all of the time, all the time, but it's incredibly important now. People are going indoors because it's getting cooler out and the potential for spread because of that is very, very great. So again, mask order is in place. I ask that people follow that, both indoors and outdoors, following the governor's order. Social distancing is, is equally as important.
All right, Beth, can you talk about the spikes? Is it two, I know last time it was too early because the last holiday we had was Halloween and that was on a Saturday. We're, so we're past a two-week point now of Halloween. Are you, has the contact tracing been able to been, be done? And is it going back to Halloween gatherings? Are you seeing?
We can't necessarily say that we've seen a lot in the, in Halloween. We have had some, some cases that we would say we can directly relate to clandestine Halloween parties that were found out about after the events. But the majority, I can't say have been. Again, as I've mentioned, people are starting to go indoors with the cooler weather occurring. And I know that, that there's been enough literature put out there and left scientific data that indicates that yes, when you're in a closed environment, that can be a concern for the spread of coronavirus. We have multiple households in which we have many members that have tested positive in the same household. So there's definitely spread occurring. And it's now also occurring multiple individuals in households. So when we do the contact tracing and when we speak with residents about the instructions, either isolate or self-quarantine, we really would ask that everyone take that to heart and follow those instructions, instructions because it daily, clearly does stop the spread. And that does include within households as well. And I believe me, I know it's not that easy to self-quarantine for 14 days away from your family. But it is a very important thing to do that, do it as best you can to try and prevent spread. Because this is a very serious illness. Unfortunately, you know, there are many people that don't have any symptoms. But there are equally as many that have very, very serious symptoms and are very sick from this. So.
Thank you, Director McGrath. Any council have a question or comment on this? Oh, I saw Council O'Brien. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mary Beth, for all you do. And you're just a rocket ship. You know, you got nothing on the recent rocket ship to the moon. So thank you. Mary Beth, what is the scenario or what is the recommendation? And you may have told us this, but you know, this, this thing just is stunning, especially the current spread. But what's the recommendation when someone is discovered to be COVID-positive? And you're like the fourth person that the first impacted, in other words, the first one that potentially got impacted by that person. You're like three people away from there. Like what does that third, fourth party do? Do they panic? There's never good to panic. Quarantine, self-quarantine, you go running, you'll grace to have a test. What's the general guideline for the residents in the community?
Right. So if a person tests positive, then they have specific instructions that they have to isolate. Yeah, they have to isolate for 10 days from the date of test. So I'll use myself as an example. If I tested positive on the 11th of November, I have to be in isolation from anyone in my household for 10 days. So that would bring me out through finishing my isolation through the 21st of November and I can resume normal activity on the 22nd. And I would be through the infected period. Member of my household, so from the test, 14 days. And that would, so that's a state, then they would have quarantine through the 25th of November and can resume normal activity on the 26th. If the family member chose to go and be tested, just not because they're required to be tested, but because they just for, you know, just a sense of wanting to make sure and see what the results were, they can go be tested. But that does not alleviate them of their isolation, excuse me, their quarantine requirement to fulfill the 14 days. They still have to follow through with that. Now, so say a family member outside of the household may have come to my house on the 12th. may have come to my house on the 12th or, you know, I mean, let me think of another scenario. You said that some person could be third or fourth out. So say my child, who's a close contact, happens to be on softball team. And they played softball a week prior to that. Anyone on that softball team could be considered a contact to a contact if it's within a certain timeframe. But so what they would do, where you, Counsel O'Brien, as you mentioned, you're third or fourth out. That's exactly what they are, is third or fourth out. They are not a case. They could be considered an exposure in which what they would do is monitor for any signs or symptoms. They don't have to be tested unless they choose to be tested. There's no requirement to do that.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Counsel Baraka.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you again, Mary Beth, for the details and the update. When you were with us two weeks ago, at that time, I believe the governor had the red, yellow, green designations and we were potentially going to be at risk of having to roll back some of our phases of opening. My understanding, and this is why I'm asking, is that that red, yellow, green system has been done away with. So I guess my question is, are we still at risk of rolling back any of our openings or what's the status of that now?
So right now Braintree is currently in Phase Three Step Two. And we have been in Phase, once, once the Commonwealth was able to move into Phase Three Step Two, Braintree has been in that designation and we haven't moved backwards. Prior to, to the, well, just after the last meeting, so the Friday after our last meeting, the matrix system, the colored matrix, matrix system changed. And so now it's, we're working on, instead, you may recall that it was if zero to four per hundred thousand was a green zone and four to eight was a yellow zone. Now it's based on the community size. So if you're 10,000 to 50,000, you would be in a certain designation per 100,000 individuals. So Braintree was at that point in the red zone and because of the new matrix, we moved back to a yellow zone based on the new matrix. And at present, we're still in the yellow zone. However, over the last few days, you can clearly see we've had a good number of cases. The matrix is updated usually every Friday or Thursday evening, Friday. So I'm always holding my breath to see what those numbers are going to be based on the new matrix. Am I concerned that we could go into the red? Absolutely I am, but that's always been a concern. These numbers clearly are not going in the direction that I want to see them going in. And 126 cases over 13 days is horrifying.
And thank you. And that matrix you can get off of Mmask.gov?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baraka. Director, any other counselor? Okay, Director McGrath, if I could just ask you, because these numbers are going up and with our nursing staff back in schools, are you still able to do the contact tracing and like in a timely fashion?
Well, we actually were in conversation with the mayor's office yesterday. We are needing assistance again of our school nurses. And once again, our school nurses have stepped up to the plate and offering their assistance. After they finish their school day, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, they're assisting us and they'll be starting that today. And then on Wednesdays, they're able to devote more time to us because the schools are in remote fashion. So again, they have 100% stepped up to the plate to assist us. Mary Mulready, our retired public health nurse, is working with us directly, as well as Paula Dowd.
Excellent. Okay. All right. Well, thank you again for being with us. We appreciate that. Let's hope the numbers go down and people listen to, follow the guidelines next week and we get through this. Anybody else have any other comment, question for Director McGrath? Seeing none. With that, if it's the will of the committee, we are going to take an item out of order. We have with us tonight, Mr. William Grove and an appointment for him for the planning board. So item 20070, Mayor Appointment of William J. Grove to the Planning Board Member or Take Up Any Action Relative There Too. Does anybody object to this moving out of order? Okay, Counsel Ringus, I will refer to you. We do have Mr. Grove here with us in attendance. You all should receive a copy of his resume and the email, the memo from the mayor's office. We do have Chief of Staff and Solicitor Nicole Taub with us. I don't know if you want to speak on this or if Mr. Grove would like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam President. The, the mayor's request for approval to appoint Mr. Bill Grove went before the Committee of Ways and Means last week, and I'll let Chairwoman Baraka speak to that. But I would note, as most of you likely remember, earlier this year, Mayor Kacoris appointed Mr. Grove to serve as an alternate member of the planning board. And since being appointed, Mr. Grove jumped right in. And for those of you that have attended the planning board meetings, whether in person when we were having them or virtually on Zoom since the pandemic started, I'm sure you would agree that he has played an active role, very thoughtful, making great contributions to the board on all of the applications that would, that have come before it in that time. So it was an obvious choice for Mayor Kacoris to seek Mr. Grove's appointment as, as member of the planning board, given the resignation of former Chair Bob Harnes, given his appointment to the bench by Governor Baker. He is here this evening. And so with your permission, Madam President, I would defer to Mr. Grove for any additional comments he has or questions from the council.
Thank you. Chief of Staff Taub? Mr. Grove, would you like to say a few words or field any questions?
I will field any questions. That's the only reason I'm here.
Okay. Okay, with that, I will refer to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, who took this up for your recommendation to the full council, Counsel Baraka.
Thank you very much, President Hume. Yes, we're pleased, or I'm pleased to let you know that after his appointment to the planning board as an associate member earlier this year, the Ways and Means Committee is sending this appointment to the full council for Mr. Grove as a full voting member of the planning board with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
And yeah, thank you for your service, Mr. Grove.
Oh, thank you.
Counsel Sasha, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Grove, I just wanted to say thank you for your work on the planning board. I've been watching a lot of the meetings and, you know, as, as Chief of Staff Taub said, you did jump right in and ask questions and challenge some, some ways that the planning board was currently doing things. I think you're doing a great job for what that's worth and thank you for continuing to do it.
Thank you. It was, it was an easy thing to do, having a little experience.
Thank you, Counsel Sasha. Counsel, Counselor Ringus.
Thank you, President Hume. Mr. Grove, congratulations on this. Thank you for the work that you have done in your time already, and I look forward to seeing what you'll, you'll do in the future going forward. Also, I think, I don't think we've noted it yet in a council meeting, but also congratulations to former Chairman Bob Harnes, who was recently appointed as a district court judge. Bob has been an asset to the town of Braintree for so many years and so many different roles from his time on the planning board to work on the opiate crisis. He is a phenomenal family man, a phenomenal all-around guy. He's going to be an excellent judge in the district court moving forward. So the, the court system's gain is Braintree's loss, but thank, congratulations to him and congratulations to you, Mr. Grove.
Thank you, sir.
Well said, Counsel Ringus. Mr. Grove, thank you for being here with us tonight. Thank you for your willingness to represent the residents of Braintree and for all your work. So with that, seeing no other comments, Counsel Ringus, do you have a motion?
Thank you, President Hume. I would move under 200070, the appointment of William Grove, that upon the request of his honor, the mayor, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, in accordance with Sections 3-3 of the Charter of the Town of Braintree, to approve the appointment of William J. Grove to the planning board as a member.
Second.
It's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Clark Sumino, a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Baraka?
Yes.
Counsel Connors?
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
You seem to be having a little trouble with the connection tonight, so bear with us, everybody. Okay, well, congratulations, Mr. Grove. It's official. You're now an official member of the planning board. So you're more than welcome to stay with us or you can go about your business for the rest of the evening. But thank you again for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Counselors.
Take care. Okay, with that, we're going back on the agenda to item 20071, the town clerk polling locations or take up any action relative there too. This did go to Ways and Means. Before I go to Counsel Baraka for this, I do want to say what I hope will happen tonight. So this is on the agenda. I want to hear the recommendation from Counsel Baraka, who's Chairwoman of Ways and Means and how the Committee on Ways and Means discussed this and voted on this. Listen to what our town clerk Jim Casey has to say on this. He is with us tonight. And then table this item. I, I think many of us have heard from many residents, but I think there's still more information to be discovered. There's still more information to be found and hear from. I don't, I think Clerk Casey's going to get into some timeframes and deadlines and whatnot, but we did do these three polling places as a temporary vote to the end of the year because of COVID. So what's going to be asked of us with this order, 20071, is a permanent change to three polling places and this is not something we take lightly. So having said that, I hope we can have those discussions tonight, table it at the end at a future meeting, whether it be our next meeting or not, we will definitely publicize it. We have B Cam here. We have the Patriot Ledger here with us tonight. I hope they will pick up all the details on this. We will post all the information. And in the future, I will let the public speak on this. It's not going to be a public hearing, but I think this impacts every resident, every voting member of the community. So we're going to open that up to let them speak. So with that, I will turn it over to Counsel Baraka, Chair, Chairwoman of the Ways and Means for the recommendation of that committee on this order.
Thank you, President Hume. I know, I'll let Clerk Casey spell out the details that we heard earlier from him last week when we met. We are sending this to the full council tonight with a split vote. So two members of our committee, of the five members, voted to continue with the consolidation. Two members voted to revert back to precinct level polling locations and one member voted present. So we definitely had some robust conversations and I'll leave it there so that we can discuss it amongst ourselves and after hearing from Clerk Casey. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baraka. So with that, I will turn it over. We have Jim Casey with us here tonight, who is the town clerk and who has gone through the 2020 election season. It was also your Super Bowl this year. So we've had a lot of that going on in town. Many, many elections and many changes this year. So how about you speak to us on item 20071? With the thought, again, we're going to bring this back at the future, if it's the will of this committee.
Okay, thank you. And it was quite the Super Bowl. And my hair, hair did turn a little lighter than it was before the election. So we're a good position here. Okay, the town of Braintree has recently held three elections in the past 60 days with over 40,000 cumulative ballots cast during that time period. And more than half of these ballots cast were cast either by early in voting by mail or in person. Every four years, when a presidential race is on the ballot, voter turnout tends to reach its highest point. A view of the 10-year trend chart provided to each of you in your meeting materials reveals several, several voting trends. One, voter turnout on presidential elections have increased over previous years for both 2016 and 2020. A growing usage of early voting for all elections has been observed since 2018. There has been a deep, steep decline in early voting in 2012, Election Day voting, I'm sorry. In 2012, nearly 20,000 voters cast a ballot on Election Day. In 2016, votes cast fell by, to below 15,000. And in 2020, this level fell below 8,000. This steady drop in the number of voters casting ballots at the polls on Election Day, along with the increased number of ballot choices for voters, has raised many flags in the administration and fiscal responsibilities on future elections. On the administrative side, a significant challenge is placed upon those responsible for overseeing elections. One, management of ballots. I'm sure you're all aware of the municipality that found nearly 3,000 early voted ballots after the polls were closed during the September 1st day primary election. During the November 3rd election, nearly 22,000 ballots were cast. They came from early voting by mail, early voting in person, early voting, absentee voting by mail, absentee voting in person, and Election Day voting. Technology assists election officials to manage the tracking of these ballots, as well as provides an immediate flag for the checking clerk 20-person who had previously requested an early vote by mail ballot, but decides later on to either cast their ballot in person or on Election Day. I call this maintaining the integrity of the election process. Efficient utilization of staff, it's the ability to share election knowledge and experience among many more election workers. In voting centers, I have four wardens to share their experiences into a help new wardens as they move forward into this election process. On the individual polling location, the warden stands alone. The fiscal responsibilities. Technology does not come cheap. Moving to 12 polling locations versus three voting centers would triple the cost for additional secure Wi-Fi transmittage for each election held. Under Massachusetts election law, a constabulary police officer is required to be, be at each polling location. Again, triple the cost for elections. Elementary schools, when voting, with voting centers, all polling locations will be eliminated from elementary schools. Under the 12 individual polling locations, six elementary schools will be used. One in each voting center, one in each voting district, I'm sorry. Concerns from parents and school administrators have long been raised in permitting strangers in entering these elementary school buildings. There have some negatives been raised. Some have raised the voting centers are not accessible by public transportation. I'd like to point out, this would also be the same for the individual polling locations. Braintree Elder Affairs provides transportation to polls for residents 60 years of age or older. That essentially is their charter. They do not provide transportation for those under 60 years of age. Otherwise, it would not be called an elder center. There are some other options to, to obtain or to get to a polling location. That is ride sheer transportation that is available at a reasonable cost for those all not having access to a vehicle. And additionally, though I know that somewhat has declined significantly, are taxi cabs. That is another useful option for voters to get to their polling places. Those with disability would be disproportionately affected as some of the claims have come out. Each voting center has multiple voted-assisted terminals in each voting center for those with visible, visual disabilities. Individual, individual polling locations would only have one of these machines. And as we all know, when we get older, things that seem to break down a little more. These terminals are aged, they're over 15 years old, and they have an unpredictable failure rate. These negatives would equally apply to voter centers and to individual polling locations. Many other municipalities across the state have some form of consolidation of voting precincts and many more have it under consideration. I strongly believe the trial of voting centers these past three elections and under the extreme conditions driven by the COVID pandemic were widely obsessive by the vast number of voters. I present these options of voting centers based on my many years of experience as an administrator and my responsibility to our community to manage the election costs now and into the future. And I ask for your consideration on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Okay, any member of the council want to speak on this? And again, we can table it tonight. We can formulate more questions, gather more information and bring it back at a future date. But as I said, it's going to be the, Counsel Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you. I think the next election that we have isn't for a year, correct, Mr. Casey?
The, the next scheduled election is November 2nd, 2021. However.
That's, that's good enough right there. So. That's, that's good enough right there. So I, I think we got plenty of time to make the right decision on this, and we shouldn't be in any hurry. So I think tabling this is very appropriate. Get as many answers as we can to make sure we're doing, if we do it, whatever we do, we're making the right decisions. We have a lot of time to think about it.
Thank you, Council Ryan. Council Mackin, you are up next. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I agree with the Council President regarding tabling this decision, but I would like to say, you know, Clerk Casey, I think you and your, your team did a phenomenal job through all this with, you know, three elections. I know at South Middle School, what I witnessed, it was incredibly efficient. You know, for I, the volume that was coming in, especially in the November election. So you really did do a great job. So as far as what I saw, I would, I witnessed myself from an efficiency standpoint. I don't really see an issue with continuing it. But as the President said, you know, we did vote to approve this on a temporary basis, and that, that's how it was presented, that's how it was approved. And, you know, people do feel strongly on this. Some, some people do have strong opinions on this one way or the other. So I think that is important to gather as much of that feedback as we can. And I know, you know, the night we voted on it, there were some counselors who even proposed maybe going down to six locations. I don't know if that was feasible. Anyway, and to echo Council Ryan, we do have plenty of time here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Mackin. Council Ringus, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, thank you, Clerk Casey, for being here tonight. And I think, like everyone has already said, you had two enormous elections. As much as Ms. McGrath has had her sort of work cut off for her, your staff and yourself and your staff, your work cut off for you over the last few months from the South Middle School vote, which had a tremendous turnout to the recent presidential election and, and obviously the primaries as well. So thank you to you and your staff. And for people that don't know, it, it's not like the Town Clerk's Office is robust with staff members. You, you work very efficiently with a very limited number of staff. So thank you to you and, and to everyone that works in there. I was one of the, the folks when we initially were voting on this consolidation. They did not want to go down to three. I, I voted against it that night. And you had some very strong arguments for that night for why it was proper. And I had some, I had some concerns. I had concerns about consolidating down with COVID. I had concerns about the efficiency. I had concerns about what the voter turnout would be like. And I had one other concern in terms of accessibility of polls. But for the most part, you were right and I was wrong. So it's Jim Casey, one, Ringus, zero. So I, I applaud you for being able to predict that. It's clearly a testament to how efficient you are at your job. You did, I kind of agree with the other counselors. I was going to suggest that we do table this because I do think there are a few issues that we still face. A lot of residents have reached out to me in terms of just the ability to get to the polls and vote. And I think it's something that we have some time to perhaps talk about. I, I was formerly the District Five Counselor, now at large, and, you know, District Five is always near and dear to my heart. We have a number of sort of nursing homes or assisted living facilities. We have some, some rooming houses down in Holbrook Ave, and some of those folks have some trouble getting to the father away polls, especially when you move it from Town Hall down to South. So I think it is something worth looking at. So I, I was going to suggest a tabling, but I, I, I one hundred percent believe that you will have the answers we need as we move forward. I did want to ask you though, because when Council Ryan was talking, you threw a however out there. So I just was wondering, what, what was that however that you were throwing out there?
It's just the uncertainty on this recall election. If that comes to fruition, we have to move a little more quickly. But I just want to let you, I, I bring up this discussion now because what happened back in June and July of last year, we were under the gun to present everything to you and decisions had to be made with a very short timetable. I, I realize that there is a lot of discussion that needs to be done on it. There are going to be people in favor and people against of it. But having the discussion now to allow people to understand that this decision will be made at some point in time. And whatever the outcome is going to be from you council members, because you are the decision makers on this by mass general laws. But by having the discussion now, we have time to think about it, and I would like to have it buttoned up, however, prior to the summer months. That's the only thing I am asking that we do finalist, finalize this by, let's say, May fifteenth. So I can make my decisions on how I have to hire staff and what polling locations I have to book and so on and so forth. Okay, so, but I am more than happy that to have this table and look forward for the discussions.
Thank you. Appreciate that. No further questions, President.
Thank you, Council Ringus. I have two other councils, but real quick, Clerk Casey. So May fifth, is that your deadline for when you'd like this all resolved? To get, you know, materials printed, information sent out to residents, all that?
Yes, some of the precincts I have to book because we don't own the buildings. Okay, so I have to secure those buildings there. See how I'm going to staff up, whether it's precincts or voting centers. And there's just a lot of administrative things that are done way in advance. So that's would essentially be the timeframe.
All right. I'm thinking when we may take it up in the future, maybe after the new year with holidays approaching. So all residents can have some time to look at the material. And Clerk Casey, all the information that you have so far on this, can I ask that you put this out on the Town Clerk's website so residents can have an opportunity to view it all and ask their questions of the council? Any member of the public resident who wish to ask us a question about this moving forward for the future agenda, you can send one email to towncouncil@braintreema.gov. That will go to all nine of us, including our Clerk Sue Semino. We can get all those questions all together and we can put them out on the town website, whatever. And, but we'll inform everybody of when this is going to come up in the future. Is that something that's feasible for you, Clerk Casey?
That's feasible. And if you have any questions, any of the questions come forward, please share them with me so I can provide my input to assist you in determining the nuts and bolts of elections.
Well, I know there's a saying, a picture's worth a thousand words, and I know the graphs that you sent, I believe it in our packet or whatnot. If you could get that out there, I think that would be very telling. Yeah, that's the one, that top one especially, that shows voting trends of how many people were voting in the past in person. So I think that is a terrific graph. I think that will answer a lot of people's questions. And with that, I'm going to go to Council Sasha. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Clerk Casey. It has already been said, but I'll say it again. I, my voting experience was smooth and easy this year. I've heard nothing but similar comments from other residents with few exceptions. And that was all about getting to polling locations from some handicapped residents. And I think as long as, you know, frankly, Madam President, thank you for suggesting this will be open to the public. So I think that's critical. We have to hear those residents that have had issues. And I think we, as a council, need to make sure that we don't move ahead with anything unless we can be sure that those issues will be addressed going forward for our residents that are, have the hardest trouble, have the most trouble getting to the poll. So if we can have a couple of open comment periods and some back and forth with the residents and work through those issues, you know, then I think, I think we can, we can, you know, figure out a way to make this work for everyone. Thank you.
Right, and Council Connor, so ahead.
Um, so I just want to also state, I was volunteering for the three elections, and I think they went really well in District Three, but I was with District Three and Four. So I was actually going to ask the same thing about the data, Jim. If maybe we could get, we're getting a lot of questions about data, about voting and, and the trends and actual numbers. And so people can look at data and make a decision, you know, based off of that. If you could do that. And also, one of the questions I've had is the, and you explained it to us in Ways and Means, and if you could just explain it really fast, I would appreciate it. There's one, I think it's Counselor Sasha's district that now goes all the way to the high school, but it's because of the districts that they're in, because of the vote, the actual voting slip. Could you just explain that quickly, why we put those two together at the same location?
Because the town of Braintree has two Senate districts and two Governor Council districts that we had to split the ballots under the design of our town during the charter. District one and two were formed because all districts had to be contiguous. And with that, District one and two were assigned. The state senator, which is Walter Timmer, Senator Timmeltie, for their district. And the remaining three, four districts have Counsel, Senator Keenan. And the ballot styles are different, so we have to ensure that we do not mix up ballot styles. And it also is important when you folks for the November second election that are running for District Council, there are six ballot styles. So we have to ensure that we manage our ballot styles, that they're in the, the correct position, are in the correct precincts, okay?
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate that the Clerk's Office did a phenomenal job during these three elections. I got to see behind the scenes of what, what happens, and it's amazing. And you guys just, you guys are on top of it, and thank you very much for that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Council Connor. Anybody else? With that, Council Ringus, would you like to do a motion to table this?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Madam President. I would just, at this point, we had, we had looked at tabling into December fifteenth. Madam President, I would defer to you. Do you think December fifteenth is the appropriate date? Would you like to go into the new year?
I think we need to go into the new year just because it's a busy time and to get all the information, to give residents the opportunity to get their questions into us, to give Clerk Casey the opportunity to get all that information out onto the town website and approaching the holidays and whatnot.
One hundred, one hundred percent agree with that. And the only thing I would also request is when we do bring this back up, if perhaps we could have the attendance of the President of the Disability Commission, because I know that there was a meeting that had some issues brought up by folks in regards to this and some, some folks with limitations getting to the polls. So I think it would be important to have a representative from the Disability Commission here as well. So with that said, under twenty zero zero seven one, Town Clerk polling locations, I would move to table this to a date in January of two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan, to table item two zero zero seven one two twenty twenty-one, which we do not have that calendar yet approved. So once we do, we will set a date on that. Clerk Semino, a roll call vote, please.
Council Berika.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Hi.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume. Council Mackin.
Hi.
Council O'Brien.
Hi.
Council Ringus.
Hi.
Council Ryan.
Hi.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
That's nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Semino and Council Ringus. I just want to thank you for bringing that up about the Disabilities Commission, which Clerk Casey, if you haven't already done so, I know in your polling places, you've spoken to the ADA coordinator.
Point of order. The motion just got tabled.
You're right. I'll talk to you later. Thank you, Council Ryan. Keeping me honest here. Okay, moving on, item two zero zero seven two. Mayor requests for appropriation Smelt Brook Culvert and Fisheries Habitat Restoration or take up any action relative there to. This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on order two zero zero seven two?
Go move, Madam President. Back in.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan, Clerk Semino, roll call to open the public hearing.
Council Berika.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Hi.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume. Council Mackin.
Hi.
Council O'Brien.
Hi.
Council Ringus.
Hi.
Council Ryan.
Hi.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Is unanimous. And with that, I will refer to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, Council Berika, for your recommendation to the full council.
Thank you very much, President Hume. Okay, the Ways and Means Committee met last week. This appropriation is being requested from the Community Preservation Act funds. And just as a reminder, these funds do not come out of our general operating budget, but rather they come from a fund that is based on a one percent surcharge on our property taxes, which is then matched by the state to be used for work such as this. So this appropriation is for the construction of a little park to be adjacent to the Smelt Brook. It will provide residents a scenic place to enjoy the brook and relax in Waymouth Landing. Just like the first phase of this project, which we approved some funding for back on October twentieth. This project, sixty percent of the cost of the park is being borne by the town of Waymouth, and Braintree is contributing or being asked to contribute the remaining forty percent. So the Ways and Means Committee senses to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommend, recommendation.
Thank you, Council Berika. Is anybody from the mayor's office wish to speak on this?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I would only to note, we have with us this evening Director Christine Stickney of Planning and Community Development, as well as Kelly Phelan, Conservation Planner. And with that, I would open it for questions from the council or the public.
Any council have a question?
To anybody on the staff here?
Anybody from the pub? Did I just, yep, hold on. Council O'Brien, go ahead. Caught your hand, I was going over.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I couldn't find it. Sorry about that. So I don't have a question per se, but I am going to make a comment. Realizing that Waymouth is going to bear, I think that's the way to term it, whatever, sixty percent where we're going to bear forty percent. And looking at the location of this, it seems to me like this is largely in Waymouth because it's right on the border. But barring that, I approve the previous expenditure because I know that it's the right thing to do to open up the brook. But I refuse to approve this one because I am still under the impression, and nobody's provided me anything, to the contrary, that Waymouth was provided funds when the new train was put in place by the MBTA. So the MBTA provided some form of funds. I believe Waymouth got them. I believe Waymouth should be paying for this one hundred percent. I will stand against this and, you know, until someone could sway me another way. I, I won't stand up for any other payments towards this. I do say that I am a, a, an avid fan of open space. I'm an avid fan of everything that this council, this body has done, not necessarily this seated council, but previous bodies have done in expenditures from the CPC. But this one I cannot support. I can't approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Council O'Brien. Okay, from the public, Robert Kearns. Go ahead. You have. Go ahead, you just need to unmute. There you go.
All right. Thank you so much, Madam President. Just want to say thank you to the members of the Ways and Means. I think this project is a good project. I respectfully disagree with Counselor O'Brien. I think that it's good that Braintree has a stake in this, even though it is on the town line. It will improve greatly the beauty of the Waymouth Landing, which is in both towns. And I think that the daylighting is a great project and really helped improve Smelt Brook. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this? Seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan, to close the public hearing on item two zero zero seven two. Clerk Semino, a roll call vote, please.
Council Berika.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Hi.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Hi.
Council Mackin.
Hi.
Council O'Brien.
Hi.
Council Ringus.
Hi.
Council Ryan.
Hi.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
All in favor, zero opposed. Sorry, night.
Yes, thank you, Clerk Semino. Council Ringus, a motion, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would move that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter forty-four B of the General Laws and with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the appropriation of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the CPA Open Space Fund for the Smelt Brook Culvered Fisheries Habitat Restoration Project Phase Two, proposed mutual parking the landing between Number One Commercial Street Braintree and the former Old Mill Grill, Number Four Commercial Street Waymouth, at the corporate town line with Waymouth. Conditional on the funds expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Director of Planning and Community Development.
Second.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ryan, Council Rengus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
I apologize. Council Hume.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
For discussion, I just want to make note for the previous speaker. Point of order. This is a vote. The discussion's over. I raised my hand, and no one addressed my hand being raised for discussion.
Too late.
I, I, I'm going to allow it, just because I was looking down, I did not see.
Unbelievable, unbelievable.
My apologies, that was my fault. I'll take responsibility there. Go ahead.
Just want to correct the previous speaker that I'm all for the daylighting. I just feel the expenditure for the park is a bridge too far. My vote is no.
Council Rengus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
That's eight in favor, one opposed.
Eight to one. Thank you, Clerk Semino. And moving on to two zero zero seven three, may I request for appropriation Middle Street Minnatico River Trail application or take up any action relative thereto. This is thereto. This is also a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on order two zero zero seven three?
Still moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Rengus, seconded by Council Ryan, to open the public hearing. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Rengus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. We are in the public hearing. With that, I will refer to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, Council Erica, for your recommendation to the full council.
Thank you, President Hume. This appropriation request is also from our town's Community Preservation Act funds. This is for a construction of a third of a mile trail along the Minnatico River off of Middle Street. This project, in addition to providing some nice open space and recreation, also fulfills part of our town's open space and recreation plan by providing more public access to the Minnatico River. The Ways and Means Committee sends this also to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Council Erica. Anybody from the mayor's office wish to, wish to speak on this?
Chairwoman Erica summed it up quite well. We would open it up to for questions.
Excellent, thank you. Any counselor wish to speak on this? Counselor Sasha, I saw you going for it, so there you go.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, to thank everyone involved in this for, I, I know that it has been almost ten years since some of these things were starting to be discussed, and it's just great to see the Planning Department, Conservation Department, getting these things to a point where finally residents will be able to walk along the river more than ever before. So, you know, this one and the prior one, thank you to everybody for, for getting this done on behalf of the town. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other counsel wish to speak on this? Council Flaherty, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I realize that there's a lot of great reasons to live in Braintree, and the ones that get cited the most have to do with ease of transportation and the great school system and so forth. But I really think that the natural features of Braintree often go on, well, we don't tout those as much, but they're there. And I think sometimes they're a little underutilized and under-recognized, and I'm glad that we're doing this. I, I think Braintree residents will get a lot of, a lot of use out of this, and it's a, it's a wonderful project, and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Any other counselor? Okay, I just want to, I, I know Chief of Staff Tobb did recognize Kelly Phelan and Christine Stickney here, but I also want to, so maybe we have Kelly Phelan in here in the future, future to talk about all the benefits and things. There is a booklet that you have out that I don't think many residents are aware of, but that's, we'll talk about that at another meeting. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on order two zero zero seven three, raise your hand. Okay, seeing, oh, Robert Kearns, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. It's ironic that a lot of these things are on the same agenda, but it, I just want to say it's a great project. Thank you all for your support for the river access. I think it's going to be great. I know it was a couple of years ago where the council approved the, in the CPC approved the acquisition of the property. It's beautiful. If you haven't got a chance to walk down there, it'd probably be better once the trails are done, but it's beautiful property right along the river, and it'd be great to get folks down there once it's complete, so thank you so much.
Mr. Kearns, anybody else from the public wish to speak on this? Seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Still moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Rengus, seconded by Council Ryan, to close the public hearing. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Rengus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Council Rengus, do you have a motion, please?
I do. Thank you, Madam President. I would move that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter forty-four B of the General Laws and with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the appropriation of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the CPA Open Space Fund and one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the CPA Unreserved Fund for the Middle Street Minnatico River Trail Project, proposed for the Middle Street Open Space Parcel located off Middle Street, which is located on Assessor's Map two thousand and two, Plot One, and Map two thousand and six, Plot One A. Conditional on the funds expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Director of Planning and Community Development.
Second.
And a motion made by Council Rengus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Rengus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Clerk Semino, moving on, item two zeros, zero seven four, the mayor requests for appropriation the Minnatico River Trail at Armstrong Dam or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing as well. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on order two zero zero seven four?
I'm, Madam President, still moved.
Second.
And a motion made by Council Rengus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Semino, roll call vote to open the public hearing.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Rengus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
In the public hearing, with that, I will refer to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, Council Erica, for your recommendation to the full council.
Thank you, President Hume. Okay. Third one for the night. This appropriation is also from the town's Community Preservation Act funds, also for a third of a mile trail along the Minnatico River. This is part of the Armstrong Dam Removal Project in District Five, but for the whole town. The project also helps fulfill the components of our open space and recreation plan as well by improving public access to the river and rehabilitating the fish habitat. So one point of note that we did discuss during the Ways and Means Committee as well, this trail is just one aspect of a multi-stage public-private partnership to help revitalize this part of the river, restore the ecology, and improve the recreation activities and increase green space for the residents. And I'm sure that the mayor's staff can speak more to that. The Ways and Means Committee sends this to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Council Erica. Council Ryan, did you want to speak on this before?
Sure, thank you. So I just want to thank the mayor's office and the Community Preservation Committee for these three projects that we're voting on tonight. As Council Flaherty mentioned, great for the town of Braintree. It's what makes Braintree great, open space. We voted on a park and two walking trails, and it gets great. It's exactly what community preservation money should be spent on. That's why we have a community preservation account. And it's a, a lot of people have done a lot of work on this, and hopefully someday we're going to have a nice herring run right up the Minnatico River, right up to our, our drinking supply. So hopefully it'll be, it'll be a good thing, and I know it's going to be a good thing. So thank you for everyone that's been involved with this.
Thank you, Council Ryan. Chief of Staff Tobb, anybody from the mayor's office wish to speak on this?
President, the only thing that I would add is when this was originally sent to committee, it was sent with a request to appropriate from the CPA Open Space Fund that was revised at committee to reflect an appropriation from the CPA Unreserved Fund.
Okay. Okay. Any counselor wish to speak on this? Council Erica, do you have your hand raised?
Yes, I do. Thank you, President Hume. I just also wanted to let folks know and thank, I, many conversations with residents who reached out to me, particularly those living downstream of the dam, about the impact of the dam removal. And I wanted to thank them because those conversations generated a broad list of questions, which are now part of the public record for the benefit of anybody in town. And I also wanted to thank the mayor's office for so quickly providing detailed answers to those questions. For those who may still have concerns or who want more information, it's clear to me that the mayor's office, the Conservation Department, and our partners at the state have done their due diligence in assessing the risks and the benefits of this project. And there will be many more meetings to come, but about its impacts on both the built and natural environment. So I think this is a great opportunity to, like Counsel Ryan said, to revitalize a former industrialized area, improve the ecology, and ensure that there are, you know, properties that are downstream are not adversely affected. So wanted to thank those residents, as well as the mayor's office, for their assistance.
Thank you, Council Erica. I just want to add, as I said earlier, picture is worth a thousand words. The documents that were provided to us tonight and to the committee, are they available on the town website? Like the renderings of what's going to happen, Chief of Staff Tobb, that residents can take a look at what these projects actually entail, and this one in particular, because it is, it's, it's going to be such a huge asset for the community that we, we can all enjoy. So for people to see and have something to look forward to, I think would be great.
No, Madam President, I'm not, I'm not certain actually if they're on the website, but if they're not, I certainly can coordinate with Steve Leary in the office to make sure that those get uploaded for everybody to review.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. All right, we are still in the public hearing. Any other counselor, before I move over to anybody from the public wishing to speak on order two zero zero seven four? Raise your hand. Robert Kearns, go ahead.
All right, thank you all. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's very exciting that this project has gotten this far, and we're, you know, I think next year, they're going through the permitting process, but next year, twenty twenty-one, or in maybe twenty twenty-two for the trail, but it's, it's really exciting. And it's a great area, and people don't know, but there's actually a little waterfall over there. If you haven't been, been in your waders and through the, the culvert there, but it's a nice, beautiful waterfall that will be, you know, overlooked. So it's going to be a great project with not only the dam removal, but the, the trail and the, the fishway there at, at the rockfall. So really an awesome opportunity for the town, and I thank everybody for their support.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this? Seeing none. One last try for the council. Any other member? Seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Still moved, Madam President.
Second.
Then a motion made by Council Rengus, seconded by Council Ryan, to close the public hearing. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Rengus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Is unanimous. Thank you all. Council Rengus, a motion, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter forty-four B of the General Law, the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the appropriation of three hundred thousand dollars from the CPA Unreserved Fund, the Minnatico River Trail at Armstrong Dam, located on the former Armstrong Cork site, Assessor's Map ten thirty-one and Plots One and Five. Conditional on the funds expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Director of Planning and Community Development.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Rengus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Rengus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
That's nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you all. That is unanimous. Moving on to the next items, two zero zero seven five. The mayor requests for authorization to accept the provisions of Sections four nineteen of the Acts of nineteen ninety-eight, Chapter one ninety-four, and the intermunicipal agreement for cooperative recycling on the South Shore or take up any action relative thereto. I will refer to Counsel Ryan, who's the chairman of the Committee of Department of Public Works, for his rec, recommendation to the full council.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This evening, before our meeting, the Department of Public Works Subcommittee met to bring up this matter, and we come back to the full council with a favorable, a unanimous favorable recommendation for positive action on this. In our meeting, Jim Osno, the DPW Director, as well as Nicole Tobb and Jeffrey Kuntz were there, and they explained the benefits associated with joining this collaborative and the cost savings that could be realized. So I think it's something that we absolutely should do, and we have that staff here tonight if they want to talk further about this. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Chief of Staff Tobb, anybody from the mayor's office wish to speak? As was mentioned, we do have Director Arsenault from DPW, Head of Recycling Jeff Coons, and who else am I missing? I think that's it.
Thank you, Madam President. I would note, because I don't know, well, he'll probably get referenced in a, in a few of our later items, but Ed Spelman, Director of Municipal Finance, is also here with us this evening. The only thing I would note, just to clarify, because it was something that came up during committee, and, and I want to make sure that we're clear in the memorandum that was provided to the council, it identified some of the incentives to membership that are published by the collaborative specifically, and there's reference of financial savings related to tonnage. And I just want to make it clear that we're not indicating that the town is going to realize savings of three point two million dollars a year as a result of the membership, but that those are savings that other member communities have realized. And so that is a, a, a marketing item essentially that the collaborative puts out as part of their data set. But there are certainly significant benefits that the town will realize through the membership of the collaborative, which Jeff can certainly elaborate on if there are questions from members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any councilor have a question or comment on this? Council O'Brien, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Chief of Staff Tobb. In fact, you nailed the head, the nail on the head, or hit the nail on the head. Because I saw that, and I immediately jumped on, where is the one point four eight six savings to the residents for the trash fee? But clearly, there's no savings for the residents on the trash fee. And historically, I've been told, historically, and I've been on the seat for a while, that we have like the utmost cheapest trash fee around, I mean, sorry, tipping fee around or tipping costs around. And I really have to scratch my head and wonder why we would want to join this collaborative, and I really would love to be sold before I make a vote.
Jeff Coons, you want to take that question?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, yes. There, there is low-hanging fruit, and there has been for several years that we have, in the town of Braintree, and the team that we have working with me have been able to capitalize on. But as we move ahead, there are areas, particularly in the areas of processing of recycling, as a result. as a result of the China Syndrome, if you will, that took place several years ago, recycling costs have escalated from, actually back in 2013, when we were getting money for recycling, to the point where we actually anticipated having to pay upwards of $150 a ton for recycling. And I just use that as one example. We have already begun collaborating with the SSRC, South Shore Recycling Cooperative, on a consortium of towns to put out an RFP to take the volume from all of our towns and negotiate it with potential processors of recycling. There are opportunities like that. Speaking with the highway department, we're also working on transportation costs of moving materials that have been accumulating at the compost site. And all communities have transportation issues. Putting out an RFP for all of that will benefit the town. We, there's an opportunity with volume to negotiate from strength. We've negotiated, I think, exceptionally well, given our smaller volume as a community against others like Boston and Quincy and Waymouth. We've shown that there's opportunity. We've capitalized on some of that. And I think this is an opportunity to join an organization that not only will bring more communities together with us, but also gives us an opportunity to do more professional lobbying in Boston and in the state in general to leverage those opportunities. We don't have the capacity to do lobbying. We don't have the capacity to negotiate with DEP and with some of the major players. And I think this gives us the platform to work from.
Thank you, Jeff. Counsel O'Brien, does that answer your question?
Yeah, but I saw that Counsel Barica had her hand up.
I'll get to that and I'll come back to you then. Okay, Counsel Flaherty, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Mr. Kuntz, for coming to this meeting. I appreciate your expertise. I think it's important for residents to understand that this, this, this decision would not impact trash service pickup. Your pickup would still happen the same way that you're accustomed to it. It won't change the trash fee that we pay initially. Or maybe, you know, that would be decided separately from this. The aim of this, it's important to emphasize, is that it's to increase Braintree's ability to partner with other, other communities in order to be able to enter into more favorable contracts with service providers. Right now, Braintree, the town of Braintree has been doing that individually, and we've supported that individually fairly well. But there is some, some strong feeling, and I think it's quite well supported, that if we partner with other communities, we can leverage some economy of scale and be able to enter into some better contracts going forward. So becoming part of this collaborative can help us manage our trash and recycling budget in the going, in the future, broadly speaking. But it isn't going to change your trash pickup. It isn't going to change what you recycle, and it isn't going to change, you know, where. And furthermore, we're not obligated to participate in any contracts that we don't want to. What this does is it opens up opportunities for us, but it doesn't obligate us to do anything. So I wanted to offer those clarification points because it seemed like maybe they weren't fully understood.
Thank you, through the president, I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty and Jeff Coons. Go ahead, Counsel Barica.
I am actually all set. So thank you to Counsel Flaherty for asking or answering the questions before I even asked them. Well done. Appreciate it.
I'm going to go to Counsel Sasha for the first time. And Counsel O'Brien, I'll get back to you for the second. Counsel Sasha, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Kuntz, I just wanted to clarify, because I think you kind of hinted at this, but I didn't hear you actually say it, that this year, the fee for joining the consortium would be half because we're doing a partial year, and that is covered by a grant. Going forward, the, the fee is 48, $4,850 a year. Some of that will, we already know, be offset by increased RDP points. And if I'm hearing you correctly, if we are able, if, if it works out, we are able to renegotiate some contracts in a larger scale with these other communities, we would actually see savings potentially more than enough to offset that $4,850. Is that correct?
I wish I could assure you through the president that that would happen. I think a lot of this has to do with cost avoidance. Costs are not going down in any of these areas. We're not going to be able to ship material out of the country going forward. We're going to have to find domestic processing systems for that. And part of that has to do with lobbying DEP in Boston and so forth. We are paying the funds through DEP grants that we have received, and we have banked some of those grants in anticipation of programs like this. So it will not affect the trash fee to the previous speaker. We're not going to see any changes in any of the activities around this. But I think that we're preparing for the future. And we have experienced with consortiums in the past, our office does, and we have led them. I think we're going to bring an opportunity to this consortium with our experience and with their volume to be able to have an impact on cost avoidance.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sasha. Counsel O'Brien, go ahead for the second time.
Thank you, Madam President. So let me, let me just step back one moment and just say thank you to Mr. Kuntz, by the way, because it is under his leadership and has been under his leadership in tandem with the administration, of course. But we have some tremendous trash fees. So don't get me wrong, I'm, you know, if there's a savings to be had, let's, let's go get the savings. I am concerned of the letter. I would ask the administration to kind of do something with that letter because it does say clearly, the SSR, SSRC provides incentives to membership of reduced disposed trash tonnage resulting in savings of 3.2 million a year. And I think that definitely is something that certainly got my attention, which is why I went down the trash fee conversation. I'd like the trash fee conversation to continue, or at least to be thought about. But I will support this, Mr. Kuntz, because I do recognize that you're beginning a "we", because you represent "we". Thank you. We are beginning to experience some, some growth in the cost of getting rid of this stuff. So I'll support it. I am happy that we are moving forward, even though we're not a member. But to the previous speaker's position, let's hope that the, the membership fee is something that is pennies compared to what we can garner from this collaboration. Thank you very much for your time and effort.
Thank you. And through the president, if I may, the literature that you received spoke to the experience of those communities, which are tracked very much what happened in Braintree. From 2005, '08, '13, there were some significant changes that took place. In the committee hearing tonight, I did express that back in 2008, our trash tonnage was 15,000 tons. This year, I expect it's going to be south of 12,000 tons. We have all experienced a reduction in trash. And in part, that's because of the emphasis we put on recycling. So that, that emotional literature that they put out for membership spoke to a long history, not just a short period of time or projecting anything ahead. But I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselor? Counsel Barica, for the second time, go ahead.
Yep, no, I just want to thank Mr. Kuntz for his work on this. I think it's especially important, and it's forward thinking. And it, for the residents, it sounds like it's going to be a seamless behind the scenes and hopefully upside in the future. So I'm, I'm definitely in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Kuntz.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Barica. Mr. Kuntz, I am a big supporter of yours. I think you've done a fabulous job over the years with the recycling and the trash and bringing the new initiatives. I do have a couple of questions for you. So thank you for all that you've done, for all your work. I do refer to you as a subject matter expert, and I always appreciate it. So I will be supporting this because I respect your opinion and your decisions on these matters. But have a couple of questions for you. So in the information you gave us, there's going, there could be a change in the recycling and in hazardous waste. Did I read that correctly, like increasing what could be recycled and brought to hazardous waste? Is that fair?
Not, not quite. Clarify that. The, there is an opportunity, although it is driven by DEP. The banned materials on recycling are not something we have control on. How we manage those banned materials, and let me give you an example. Projected for 2022 is banning mattresses from the trash program, which means that we would have to formulate a methodology of managing mattresses. And that's the way most banned materials have evolved. And we, the banned materials actually become recycling materials. Paper was banned, so we have to find a tool to recycle it. That's a very easy one. So we will continue to deal with that. But part of the way we'll deal with it is from a position of strength, of having more communities speaking in a, in a single voice. And secondly, on hazardous waste, we're relatively unique that we host Clean Harbors. And we do receive some support from Clean Harbors to manage our hazardous waste activities. It has been twice a year. Last year, it was once a year. We are also working with Clean Harbors to be able to utilize their drop off center in Quincy Avenue during the seven months that it is open, which give us another outlet. I do not, I am not at this point in favor of opening up our hazardous waste days to other communities. We're restricted by space and time. We will evaluate that. We'll also evaluate the, the cost of recycling, given the Clean Harbors stipend that we receive versus the cost of the company that they have negotiated with. I expect that we'll probably for next year, we'll continue to stay with Clean Harbors and not open things up, but we'll evaluate it throughout the year to make a decision to change that. And the change would allow our residents to use other communities' recycling days. That in itself is a benefit that we can't provide right now. Although I think that there, there are other tools to do that, and we'll continue to evaluate that. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, it, it does. And I just, I, I should bring up too, so you did actually have a hazardous waste day during the pandemic, which I had the opportunity, one, to stop by and, you know, observe, but also drop off stuff from my household. And it was so smooth and flawless under the current pandemic. So I, I thought it was very well run, huge crowd, as always. There's always a line at hazardous waste day. So I have to agree with you on, I don't know how we would open it up to other communities because we're always at capacity, and there's always a line from any time I've been there. Because it's such a great opportunity for residents to remove hazardous materials in a safe, in a safe place. Two other things, it mentions there's two members. Who are the two members? Do you, do we know this yet? Or is that to be determined?
It would be myself and Rosemary Nolan.
Okay.
Associate in the office.
Okay. And then, as I mentioned, you do so much outreach, outreach throughout the community on the recycling. Will that change? Will it improve? Is, is somebody else, is this group going to be the cooperative going to control that? Or do we remain, retain control of the outreach in our own community?
We'll maintain our, the control of the outreach in our community, but we'll tap into any best practices from the other communities that we can and incorporate them into ours.
Perfect. Okay, that does it for me. Thank you so much. Anybody else? With that, is there a motion, Counsel Ringus?
There is, Madam President. I would move that the town accept Section 419 of the Acts of 1998, Chapter 194, and the intermunicipal agreement for cooperative recycling on the South Shore, which provides for membership in the social recycling collaborative.
Second.
Has been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Barica.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Kuntz and Director Arsenault, and to all your staff.
Thank you, through the president. My thanks to the council.
Thank you for being here as well. With that, we are moving on to item 03720. Counsel Barica, the update on the first quarter fiscal year 2021 budget actual versus projection, or take up any relative action there too. I believe Chief of Staff, Tom, is going to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Madam President. At the request of the Committee of Ways and Means and in accordance with the commitment that the mayor's office made at last week's committee meeting, myself and Ed Spelman, who's here with us this evening, offered the committee an update on where our finances stand as we close out the first quarter of fiscal year 21. So with your permission, Madam President, I will offer the full council, as well as any members of the public who are here with us this evening, that same presentation. And I'm going to make an attempt to share my screen so those folks who are interested can follow along. So, let me see here. Okay, so can folks see word, the word document that's up on the screen? Yep. Okay, great, thank you. This is my first screen sharing experience, so I want to make sure I'm doing it correctly. So, and we'll certainly make this presentation available, excuse me, for folks who are interested in any of the follow up. I'll start by talking about state aid. As you may recall from the budget process earlier this year, the town level funded state aid based on our fiscal year 20 funding for a total of $21,0234. While the legislature has not yet finalized the state aid for fiscal 21, I'm happy to report that based on the information we have now, the town is going to see at least a net increase in the amount of $42,850 from our original budgeted amount. And I say at least because that was the governor's number. Last week, we received notice that the House recommended budget included an additional $3,000 for the town state aid. And the Senate recommended a budget that included an additional $10,000 in state aid. So we might actually see an additional $13,000 on top of the $42,850 that we're anticipating once that gets approved by the governor, which is certainly great news for us in fiscal 21 as we have seen an expected reduction in some of our revenue streams. The first revenue stream is the meals tax. As everybody recalls, we reduced our meals tax by 25% from our fiscal 20 estimate and valued our annual revenue at $936,000. Restaurants have been operating at a fairly limited capacity throughout the pandemic, which certainly has impacted their revenue, which in turn impacts our earnings. Based on prior years, we estimated receipt of $230,724 in the first quarter of fiscal 21. Initial earnings reports that we've received put us at receipt of $198,630, or just over 86% of our estimate for the first quarter of fiscal 21. One important thing to note for both the meals tax and the rooms tax is that these establishments did have the option of deferring tax payments to later in the year. So the number that we've received for first quarter earnings may not actually be representative of the total for the quarter, and there may be additional revenue coming in for the July, August, September timeframe. As far as rooms tax go, based on again, an anticipated limited operation of these establishments, we reduced the rooms tax by 50% from our fiscal 20 estimate and valued those earnings at $832,500. Again, looking at how, the proportion of how the revenue comes in throughout the year, we anticipated receipt of $205,211 in the first quarter. And as far as room tax go, as you can see, we came in pretty close, just under And as far as room tax go, as you can see, we came in pretty close, just under ninety-four percent of the estimated value or a hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. As I mentioned, these establishments also had the option of extending the due date for filing returns and making payments. Those payments that otherwise would have been due on March twentieth, from March twentieth through April thirtieth have been extended to May twentieth of twenty-twenty-one. That is the third extension of that deadline offered through legislation during the pandemic. And again, so we don't know how many of our local businesses have opted to avail themselves of the extension. And so we may see an increase in revenue at some point later in the year from this time period. So another revenue source that we talk about are licenses and permit fees. The budget reflected two million, fifty-three thousand dollars for this revenue source. And to date, the building department permit fees, which include building, plumbing, gas, electric, CO, CI's and signs received in first quarter, July one through September thirty, total three hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents. I would note that this is down from both the fiscal twenty and fiscal nineteen earnings, but we hope to see continued development and construction, which will certainly increase the revenue received from this line. I wanted to highlight one of our often talked about areas, police overtime, as a request that the council often sees at a later point during the year for supplemental. And I'm happy to report that projected FY twenty-one overtime at current trends is lower than fiscal twenty. They are based, they are at this point averaging about fifteen thousand dollars less per payroll versus last year. And have spent a total of one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars less in fiscal twenty than was spent in fiscal twenty during that same time period. The other important note on the overtime, as I reference it, is that these numbers are before any COVID nineteen or enforcement grant adjustments or reimbursements for task force overtime. I'll talk a little bit later about the, the pandemic-related reimbursements. So I would anticipate that the overtime costs at the police station are actually going to be lower than the projections that we have available to us today. Another often talked about department when it comes to financing is the golf course. As everybody knows, as a result of the pandemic, the golf course was required to close completely from March sixteenth to May sixth. So during the course of that fifty, roughly fifty-three days, they faced a significant loss in revenue due to the total closure. And that's something, that's a subject of a referral later this evening on the agenda. When the golf course opened on May sixth, it was in limited capacity. And the food and beverage service started up again on May twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty. Some of the adjustments they had to make were reducing the number of tee times to four per hour down from the standard of six per hour. There was initially a prohibition on any golf cart rentals. That restriction was subsequently lifted in mid-June. And then the clubhouse was closed for onsite dining for a significant period of time. When we compare the revenue deposits from twenty nineteen to twenty-twenty, again, there was a significant loss because of the closure and restrictions. But I'm very pleased to report that despite those restrictions in place since reopening, the first quarter revenues at the golf course are up significantly over prior years. So during the first quarter of fiscal twenty-one, they earned fifty-seven point twelve percent of their overall budget or one million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. Their earnings are up three hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars over last year's first quarter. And when you add in the revenue earned through October, their total earnings are up to one million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, or almost seventy percent of their total budget for the year. So the golf course has been doing a great job despite all of the restrictions and limitations in place and have seen a quite significant increase in their revenues and earning capacity this year. So as I mentioned earlier, and as we've talked about during prior meetings, there are additional funding sources available to the town through reimbursement as a result of the pandemic. Lorraine C., who I think most of you know, has been overseeing this process for the town and have to take this opportunity to say she has done an absolutely phenomenal job coordinating with all of our departments to make sure that the town avails itself of all opportunities for reimbursement for expenditures relating to the pandemic. So the first reimbursement opportunity comes through FEMA. FEMA reimburses the town for actual costs to perform COVID nineteen emergency response measures. That includes things like first responder overtime, purchasing of PPE and disinfectant and cleaning supplies. And they reimburse us as, at a rate of seventy-five percent. So these are fairly limited categories of expenditures. But in our first application, Lorraine submitted ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-five cents for reimbursement with a federal share of seventy-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-nine cents available to the town. The second application for FEMA reimbursement was valued at a hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seven cents, again, with a seventy-five percent share of ninety-one thousand, eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents. So anything that's not eligible under FEMA or is in the remaining twenty-five percent of ineligible costs gets submitted for CARES Act reimbursement. So as we've talked at prior meetings, the town was allotted an amount of money that is separate from funding that was provided to the school department to reimburse us for estimated or incurred eligible expenses due to COVID. So this is a much broader range of expenditures and effectively covers any COVID-related but unbudgeted expenditure. So that includes costs for school distance learning. That includes the cost for our nurses to do contact tracing, like Director McGrath mentioned earlier this evening. Any extra time spent by our school nurses in providing support in that area. Any additional cleaning or sanitizing, or for example, any remote meeting software like the Zoom licenses that we've purchased to be able to continue holding our meetings. So there have been two submissions for CARES Act reimbursement. As a result of our first submission, we received sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars. Our second submission, which was made at the end of October, included both actual expenditures as well as projected expenditures through the end of the year. We currently have a, a deadline of December thirty, twenty-twenty in order to utilize all of our CARES Act reimbursement. There has been a request or a petition made to extend that deadline and also to expand our allowable use of these funds to include revenue replacement for some of the impacts experienced by the town as a result of the pandemic. So as part of that second submission, we included actual costs incurred of one million, two hundred and thirty-three, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, seventy-one dollars, excuse me, as well as projected costs through the end of the year based on historical data and estimations for two million, three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. In addition to those, we requested the balance of available funding to make sure that we are taking full advantage of the opportunity for reimbursement within the guidelines. And the total requested amount was three million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars. The last thing I wanted to highlight again, under Lorraine's direction, we have received several COVID-related grants to help support our continued operations and additional expenditures. Those include an elections grant, a fire grant, a police grant, a remote learning grant, a food security infrastructure grant, and a block grant to support small business assistance, at which we hope to put more information out in the upcoming weeks. So all in all, you know, we expected that this was going to be a difficult year financially. But as I hope that you've seen from the presentation with, under Ed's direction, we, I think, did a great job estimating what our revenues were going to look like, as well as continuing to exercise discretion in spending to save where we can and also take advantage of any additional funding opportunities, whether it be through reimbursement or grants that might present themselves throughout the year, all things that we will continue to do as we move through the second quarter of fiscal twenty-one and then for the duration of the year. So, you know, I thank you and I thank the committee for asking us to provide this update to everybody this evening and certainly happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Chief of Staff Taub. Councilor Flaherty, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you Solicitor Taub for that rundown of, of information. It's a lot of information and, and you know what? It's not the world's bleakest picture. You know, it's, it's a, I think we're in okay shape, all things considered, all things considered. But what I
Oh, we lost.
Yeah.
We lost, Councilor Flaherty. We lost your audio. Can't hear you.
Phone from my
There you go. Yep.
Okay. Sorry, I got a little message on my computer saying that my internet was unstable. A question that I had for you Solicitor Taub was the document that you were sharing with us online, can you make that publicly available on the town website?
Yes.
Good. That's all.
Thank you. Any other counselor? Councilor Erica.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you Solicitor Taub and Ed and the whole team, including Lorraine and people who aren't here tonight. I know when we did the budget, there was a lot of uncertainty. And I am grateful, not only for the hard work of the Mayor's Office and in all the work you've done to keep the town in really good shape during a really difficult time, but also for taking the time to provide us with this helpful and comprehensive update. Yeah, so thank you.
Councilor O'Brien, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Chief of Staff Taub, and thank you to Ed Spelman. Also want to note the leadership of Mayor Kacoris and the fact that we have come through this, I guess, a little less for the where. We certainly are not a hundred percent. Of course, nobody expected us to be. I think the, the feds coming in with some of that FEMA reimbursement is, is quite nice. Some of us laypeople didn't even know that was there, so that's good. Thank you for going after as many grants as possible. And, you know, in general, I want to thank the, all of the administration because I know there were certain departments that had to lay off people. Hopefully they're back. And if they're not, this too shall pass. So we apologize to them and their families, but hopefully they're making up some of it with unemployment funds. It's been tough. I think it's tough on all of us. This has been wearing, I don't think we all love being on, on Zooms. We'd much rather be in person, but personally, I'm happy we're here because I'm happy that we're staying safe. But things don't look as bleak as I thought they would, so I greatly appreciate all of your effort in putting that together. And I hope we can continue those. Thank you.
If I may, Madam President, just to address one of those points, we did have, as we talked in the past, we did have a series of employees that were operating on a reduced hour schedule. All employees have since returned to full-time and are working at full capacity at this point.
That's great news. Thank you. I want to just concur with what many of the previous speakers said. And Ed Spelman, you are here with us tonight, although not on camera. But Ed Spelman is the Director of Municipal Finance and holds all the financial figures and monies of the town safe and gives, educates all of us on it. So Ed, thank you so much for all your work that you've done and to Chief of Staff Taub and to our grant writer. I have to say, I was surprised when we got this, the document and all the information that was put together. I think this is a great presentation and how this was put forward. It's very easy to read and pretty straightforward. And it does, I, I, I was impressed. I think it paints a really good picture that we are in good shape. And so kudos to Mayor Kacoris and Chief of Staff Taub and Director Spelman and everybody who's under you. This is, again, I was impressed in some good information, given the situation that we're in and the trying times that we're in. So great job to all. We're getting to the end of the calendar year, not our fiscal year, but going into the end of our fiscal year, I think, I hope we only go up from here. And if so, I think we're going to end the year on a great note. So congrats on the document, on all the hard work and the financial stability, I will say, of the town. Well done. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to zero-three-eight-two-zero, Council Baraka, update on the billboard sale or take up any action relative there to Chief of Staff Taub.
Thank you, Madam President. This update is a little less substantive because in effect, there is no update. As the council may recall, this matter has been tied up in land court as a result of appeal, an appeal filed by Inabutter to the permit that was granted for the billboard at two ninety Wood Road. All the proceedings have been completed. All the hearings have been held. All the briefs have been filed. And the matter sits with the court for determination. If, as soon as we receive notice that a decision has been made, I certainly will bring that to the council's attention. But at this point, I have nothing new to report.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, zero-three-nine-two-zero, Council Baraka, update the status of Allen Street, the RFP, or take up any action relative there to Chief of Staff Taub.
Thank you, Madam President. On this item, I do have a great update for those of you that have not heard. The town published, as previously indicated, a request for proposals for the sale of the property at forty-four Allen Street back in August with responses due no later than October eighth. We saw some pretty significant interest in the property. We had several vendors and individuals download the materials and participate in one of the two site visits that we conducted. And in the end, we received five proposals for the purchase of the property. So this follows the thirty-B procurement process. So bidders were required to submit both a technical and a price proposal to be evaluated separately by the evaluation committee. The five proposals we received were from Pulte Homes of New England, Arch Communities and Wind Development, Tragarth Company, Waverly three oh nine, and an individual, Anton Sella, who submitted an untimely and unresponsive proposal. So the evaluation committee, which was comprised of myself, John Thompson, the town engineer, and Christine Stickney, the Director of Planning and Community Development, evaluated the proposals based on established criteria that was set forth in the RFP. This was done without any knowledge of what the corresponding price proposals were for each of the submissions. I can say that the committee unanimously recommended Arch Communities and Wind Development as the highest ranking submission based on their technical proposal. Once that determination was made, the committee was made apprised of the financial proposals that accompanied each of the submissions. And I can share that the Pulte Homes submission was for one point five million. The Tragarth submission was for one thousand. The Waverly submission was for two hundred thousand. And the Arch Communities and Wind Development submission was also for one point five million. Now, this is great news because as you may recall, the appraisal value of the property was one point three million. And that was the amount of revenue that was included in the budget. So the next step, since issuing the notice of intent to award the contract, is to finalize the purchase and sale agreement and the land use agreement, both of which were included as appendices to the request for proposals. And we now have forty-five days to finalize the terms of those documents and get them executed. The RFP also included a few payment milestones to, so to give the council a sense of when we're going to start to realize some of this revenue. We did receive a seventy-five thousand dollar proposal security deposit, which now is retained by the town. And at the signing of the purchase and sale, we'll receive a second payment of seventy-five thousand dollars with the balance of one point three-five due at the time of the delivery of the deed. A little bit of background on the proposal. It calls for forty-four units and will include studios, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. And also really exciting, there's going to be a variation of affordability in the units ranging from both a thirty to sixty percent area median income as well as middle-income units for those who earn up to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, as well as market rate units. Twenty-five percent of the forty-four units will be reserved for workforce and middle-income families, which is really great for the housing market here in Braintree. So this is exciting. This is a major substantive step forward for the town, for the sale of the property. for the town, for the sale of the property, and also the redevelopment of the location, which if you're interested, you can download from the town's website a copy of the submission, which includes some renderings and detail about the intended use of the property, including the existing structures as well as the waterfront area. I think you'll be really pleased to see the intended work and redevelopment of that site. So thank you.
Right. Any counsel have any questions or comments on that? Counselor Sasha, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Chief of Staff Taub. So I did have a chance to download the documents. First, I was wondering, I had to go through the RFP website, which was a little bit cumbersome. And if we're at a point where we know the project that we're going with, maybe it could be posted to the planning apartment website. I really think people should take a look at this. It is, you know, it's a great use of the property. And if, when you look at it, you will see that it actually opens up the riverfront to the public. It creates multiple walking paths from Allen Street over to the river. It includes affordable housing. It has some open space, and it preserves some of the historical structure of the building. It's really an impressive project, at least on paper. So, and I know the Civic Association has chimed in, and they were in favor of it. So I really, you know, thank you and congratulations on what appears to be a really great project for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel O'Brien, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you very much for that, Chief of Staff Taub, because that was very extensive. And I look forward to these folks, the fact that they have mixed use and, not mixed use, I'm sorry, but some affordable, some workforce affordability, which is what I requested across the waterway over there and didn't receive. I think it's very exciting. I know that the work put into this was extensive and especially trying to get that walkway along the waterway. So I look forward to these guys. The only technical question I have is between the acceptance of their down payment and the PNS, what happens if they drop out?
So there's certain provisions in the agreement and according in the procurement world that would potentially allow us to go to the next highest bidder. But I'm really hopeful and confident that we'll be able to work through the details, and we won't find ourselves in that situation again.
As are we. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other counselor? So Chief of Staff Taub, I will say this, thank you for this update as well. I do appreciate this. I know back when the revenue projections were included, you, as well as Mayor Kokoris, were confident that this was going to sell and relying on you as a subject matter expert. I fully supported that. So happy to hear this is moving forward and the great positive response. Plus with the different opportunities for housing for people of, you know, all different levels is a huge win for all of Braintree. So kudos to you and your office and your staff and great work. Thank you for those updates. Totally great, great. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the council.
Okay, moving on to new business, we have none. Is there a motion to refer the following orders to the Committee on Ways and Means, Counsel Ringus? Hold on, Counsel Ringus, your audio's not working.
I would move to refer to the Committee on Ways and Means, Order twenty-zero-seven-six, Mayor FY twenty-twenty-one Supplemental Appropriation Number One, or take up any action relative there to. Twenty-zero-seven-seven, Mayor Adoption of Deficit Amortization Schedule for FY twenty-twenty deficit, or take up any action relative there to. Twenty-zero-seven-eight, Mayor Tax Rate Classification, or take up any action relative there to. And twenty-zero-seven-nine, Mayor Appointment of Therese Donovan Jarrett to Cultural Council, or take up any action relative there to. Second.
Has been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan, Clerk Semino. Roll call vote, please.
Counsel America.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin. Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
And is unanimous. Thank you all. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, December first, twenty-twenty, at seven-thirty PM. Just want to summarize, we did have Ann Toll in here with the Marge Crispin Center. For anybody who missed the beginning of the meeting, they are in need of food donations. They are looking instead of the toy drive this year, gift card donations because of the COVID situation we are in of denominations of ten, that way they can give out as many as possible. Donations can be dropped off at the Marge Crispin Center at seventy-four Pond Street, Monday through Friday, from eight to three-thirty. Did I get that time right? And they're taking food. If you are in need of help, you may also reach out to the Marge Crispin Center because they, there's just an application you fill out. And I'd also want to thank Steve Leary, who was with us tonight behind the scenes as always with the mayor's office. He's going to turn this all over to Sue Semino, our clerk of the council, in the future. So Steve, we appreciate all you've done in getting these Zoom meetings up and running and to Chief of Staff Taub for always being here and with all these things happening tonight and to all the staff members through the mayor's office. We had so many things on the agenda tonight, but so many great things to look forward to that's going to, you know, add value to our town and to your property and just so many more assets. We have so many things here in Braintree. And so great agenda tonight, so many great things. Fred Hanson's here with us with the ledger, and B Kim is always Bill Needham televising it for the future for residents to see. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, I should say. My apologies.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Madam President. To adjourn. Second.
Has been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan, to adjourn. A roll call vote, please, Clerk Semino.
Counsel America.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye, happy Thanksgiving.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye, back at you.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Good night, everybody.
Night, happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.